Good evening. The September twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three special school board meeting of the Marion County School Board is now called to order. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each of their school days, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Please join me. Thank you. I'll now ask a board member, Dr. James, to read our board motto. Good evening, Dr. James.
Good evening. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. Together, to work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I request everyone in the audience to please remove their hats and turn off their electronic devices or put them on silent. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of Marion County's school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach-colored form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime-green colored form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 P.M. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Allison Campbell, District One.
Here.
This is Lori Conrad, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District Three.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Throer, District Four.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District Five.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Genesis Munoz Rosado.
Here.
And Caitlin Kobyak.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Dr. Gullett, would you like to introduce a member of your team who will be helping us with this evening's inspiration and pledge?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Great to see you this evening. It will be my pleasure to introduce Ms. Shawna Hughes, who is our interim director for professional leadership and learning, and she is going to introduce a special guest and some very remarkable young students that I have had an opportunity to get to know. So, thank you so much.
Good evening, Madam Chair Campbell, Vice Chair Throer, board members, Superintendent Gullett, and staff. My name is Shawna Hughes. This evening's inspiration recognizes and honors the diverse history of generations of Latinos who aspirations and achievements have shaped our nation. Hispanic Heritage Month is acknowledged and celebrated in the United States from September fifteenth to October fifteenth. The month signifies a time to recognize and celebrate the many contributions, diverse cultures, and extensive histories of the American Latino community. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce Ms. Clarabelle Santiago. Ms. Santiago teaches IB and pre-A Spanish at Lake Ware High School. Her commitment to culture extends beyond the instructional day. Ms. Santiago sponsors the Spanish Club to help all students learn about different cultures and the Spanish language. Additionally, she has coordinated class trips to Ybor City to immerse students in the rich traditions of multi-ethnic Floridians, Cubans, Italians, and Spaniards. This evening, Ms. Santiago and her students will present a project highlighting the accomplishments and contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans. From the past and present, I introduce to you Señora Santiago.
Buenas noches. Hola. Soy la Señora Santiago y represento la Escuela Laker High School. Aquí le presento a mis estudiantes.
Buenos tardes. Somos...
Shawn Hooper.
Gabriela Bueno.
Y Regina Bell. De Laker High School, and we are excited to represent the multicultural student population at our school, a safe place where we can embrace and honor our cultural differences. This month, we are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with meaningful activities and events throughout our campus. We consider our parents part of our learning community. So, tonight, we are also having the International Parent Night, where information is being shared in Spanish as well as English.
We have with us a sample of research project completed in our Spanish class. We were given free will to choose a member of the Hispanic community that made an impact in our society. We discovered astronauts and teachers, musicians and poets, chefs and reporters. There were even Emmy and Peace Nobel Prize winners. We found inspiration in Latino people of all walks of life.
We want to leave you with a quote from Roberto Clemente, a Puerto Rican professional basketball player who, in nineteen seventy-two, lost his life in an airplane crash while attempting to deliver supplies to earthquake survivors. He believes that if you have a chance to make a difference in this world and you don't, then you are wasting your time on this planet. Muchas gracias, Hato, y buenas noches. At this time, I will have everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we will stand, one nation, under for all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board, let's go down and I want to first say muchas gracias para su presentación. But, Board, we're gonna walk down and take some pictures. Thank you again so much, students and your amazing teacher, for recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. Occasionally, my four years of Spanish in high school are something that I'm able to use occasionally. I wish I knew it as well as I used to. I need to get better at it. But such an important time of year, and I'm grateful that we took the time to recognize it this evening. Thank you, Dr. Gullett and team, and Ms. Hughes as well. Moving on to item four point one, we would like to take a moment to recognize some individuals and organizations who've provided sizable contributions and donations to the school district. We have groceries, paper, and cleaning products valued at one thousand four hundred fifty dollars to Don Ellen Middle School, from Russell and Heather Smith to be used for their culinary classes, and two thousand five hundred dollars to North Marion Middle School, from Oni Tyler on behalf of former teacher Vernell Tyler, to be used at the principal's discretion. And these two donations totaled three thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. And we are very grateful for these contributions that have gone to these schools. We couldn't do what we do without our amazing community supporting us, so thank you. Dr. Gullett, would you like to make a recommendation on this evening's agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I recommend approval of the agenda for the September twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting with the exception of the following items: D twenty-five point one, D twenty-five point two, D twenty-five point three, D twenty-five point four, D twenty-five point five, C twenty point two, and C twenty-two point three that have been placed under discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three school board meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. James. Second by Ms. Conrad. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September first, two thousand and twenty-three special school board meeting?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September seventh, two thousand and twenty-three administrative briefing and work session?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Conrad.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Throer. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five zero. Good evening, Ms. Martinez. Could you please provide a proof of publication for this evening?
The notice for the September twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three special school board meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, and it was also placed on the district website. The proof of publication has been attached in board docs under proof of publication.
Thank you. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board this evening. Good evening, Attorney Powers.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you. In compliance with Section two-eight-six-point-zero-one-one-four of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums are due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 P.M. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order received by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice that will be on the screen there to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided twenty-four hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsion, they'll be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of the meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students or their families is also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez, are there any speakers this evening? Yes, Madam Chair. We have one speaker, Shawn Mincy.
Hello. Good morning. Oh, good evening. So, my name is Shawn Mincy. M-I-N-C-Y. So, good evening. My name is Shawn Mincy. I am the founder of MEGA. MEGA stands for Manifesting Excellence for Guys and Girls Association. Part of our mission is provide guidance, mentorship, and support services to our youth while encouraging excellence in their lives. On September third, two thousand and twenty-three, MEGA along with the Marion County Children's Alliance held a teen summit. The teen summit was held to bring important topics to the forefront for teenagers. We wanted to create a forum that would allow teenagers to freely express themselves and create a safe space for them to do so. At this teen summit, we spoke on gun violence in the community and asked the teens how they felt. Just an overview of the event, it was held at the Ed Cross Creek Recreation Center. We had over a hundred and fifty kids in attendance at the event. During the event, we gave each child hot dogs, chips, a drink, swag bag, and a free snow cone. We also had community partners in attendance such as Community Action, Community Home Project, and the Arnett House, to name a few. We had a celebrity guest speaker as well as one that was local to provide words of encouragement to the youth. We gave away gift cards to our dance contest winners and also had a few dance groups perform. The event was very successful and the kids were very engaged. The main takeaway from the event was the input on the subject from the kids as well as we provided surveys leading up to the event for the youth and their parents. So, why am I here? Speaking before you today, my reason for being here is because I wanted to ask or propose that we bring the teen summit to the schools. Due to the positive feedback from the event as well as the need to hear our youth and reach as many as we can, I figured the best way would be at school where we could potentially reach more than if we were in the community. So, I'm asking you all to consider allowing the teen summit to take place in the schools during school hours. My idea would be something like an assembly or pep rally. We would allow the bands to perform, maybe even some of the clubs and the cheerleaders conduct a performance. Then, we will allow time to have a teen summit where it would be an open discussion. The information would then be compiled to see what can potentially be a source of some of the issues amongst the teens and forwarded to the guidance counselors to develop an appropriate action plan. I truly believe this is a way to bridge the communication gap between the youth and adults and a way for the youth to really let their voices be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mincy. Dr. Gullett, is there a member of your team who could meet with her, please?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. DeBick is in the audience who oversees our community engagement events. I think you may know each other if she can connect with you and get some additional information, how we can partner.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think I see another speaker form coming down the aisle if I'm not mistaken. Ms. Martinez?
Yes.
Jamie Niswonger?
My name is Jamie Niswonger. Last name is N-I-S-W-O-N-G-E-R. All right, so I came here, the last school board meeting, two weeks ago, and since, my son has been withdrawn from Marion County Public Schools. This is probably the fifth or sixth time I have been here. There's no resolution. My son was placed in a category where he was not going to get an education. He was going to be let to fail third grade intentionally. Why? Because you guys do not have to invest any resources in him until he fails. Is that good? Absolutely not. As a parent, will I accept that as an answer? Absolutely not. We're thirty days into school. To accept that my child is gonna fail? Absolutely not. There's a lot of room. Might he still fail? There's a chance, but I'm gonna put him in an environment where he has an equal opportunity to learn, just as every other child. You cannot be segregating out groups of children and saying, "We're not gonna invest resources in these kids because these kids are too far behind." That is the most absurd way to operate, and I'm not gonna let it be my child. Unfortunately, there are children out there who do not have other opportunities. I now have two children in Marion County Public Schools, and one child I have placing elsewhere. I will always do what's in the best interest of my child, and that was obviously not to be sat in a classroom to be babysat all day. And then a second issue, transportation. I brought that up last time, too. I had a conversation with the new director, Mr. O. I'm not gonna say his name because I'll probably butcher it. I know he's new to the district, and during the conversation, he made a few concerning comments. One comment was, "This is not an overnight fix," and I did go ahead and kindly remind him that this has not been an overnight issue. This fix has been in process for a long time, understanding that he's new and this is a new situation to him, but to say it's not an overnight fix, you're right, we haven't, we've been waiting a lot longer than overnight to have solutions come forward. And then he also said it's gonna be a long-term, but couldn't, couldn't give, you know, any insight onto what he's doing, what the plan is, what the goals are to try to rectify the situation. The all calls have not gotten better. They're not putting out all calls. You have little children standing on the side of the road. How long do you want to have these little kids out there? Some of them are young, as young as five years old. To me, a five-year-old is a baby. I wouldn't want my baby standing on the side of the road for an, you know, an hour. I mean, they play around. Unfortunately, they get sidetracked, and an hour is a long time for a little child. Five, six, seven, eight, they're all little kids. They see something, they run after it. These kids are gonna end up getting hurt. There needs to be appropriate all calls sent out to the parents so they can make arrangements or tell their kids, "Hey, you need to wait here thirty extra minutes before you walk to the bus stop so you're not on the side of the road for an hour, an hour and a half, an hour and forty-five minutes." Some buses, two hours. Now, I'm not blaming the bus drivers, and I'm not blaming transportation. You know, you only have so many drivers, you only have so many buses, but the least you could do is send out an all call so these parents are aware, and these kids aren't just standing there. I think proper preparation and proper management and proper planning goes a long way. Unfortunately, it's just not there. All calls by now should be figured out. We've had buses late for a long time. All calls are not new. Late buses are not new. We're all aware of that. The all calls should go out, and the all calls shouldn't go out after the bus should have already arrived at the school, because if you're sending out an all call after the bus has already technically should have been at the school, the kids are already at the bus stops. Every single one of the kids are at bus stops. Those all calls need to go out before the route starts. That way, these parents have adequate time to tell their parents, tell their children to not be waiting. A lot of these parents go to work, these kids walk to the bus stops. They need to be able to tell their children before they leave. A lot of these parents, although some kids have cell phones, a lot of the kids don't. There are kids without cell phones, and they need to be made aware before their parents leave for work. So, I think if we can at least get that down, and then we can start getting transportation in here and getting accurate updates, because when they come in here, and I know the beginning of the year, you guys had updates, and obviously you're, well, it's the beginning of the year, buses are gonna run late. Well, it's getting better. We have eighteen drivers we're hiring. Yeah, in that time, you probably had eighteen quit. I mean, I get it, it's a process, but there has got to be some sort of plan to make this better for these kids. Well, that's all I got for today, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Niswonger. Dr. Gullett?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Niswonger, Ms. Dobbins is here. She oversees transportation. If she could, if you could speak with her. And Board, as you're aware, we have Where's the Bus app, and I think we could talk through some other opportunities for tracking that's available for communicating with families, not just the students, so that's in real time. So, Ms. Dobbins will meet you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Thank you, Ms. Dobbins and Ms. Niswonger.
Trevor Chapman?
Oh, I'm sorry. We had another speaker. Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Trevor Chapman, T-R-E-V-O-R-C-H-A-P-M-A-N. You're gonna have to excuse my appearance. I actually work for a living. I want to let you know that I don't appreciate that I have to be here this evening. I like to well, I like to leave well enough alone, and I've always thought that perfection was the enemy of good enough, and I've reached the point where it's not good enough for me, so here I am today. I want to introduce myself a little bit. My name's Trevor Chapman. I'm the vice president of the IBW Local twelve-oh-five. I also serve as a board member and a trustee member of our local apprenticeship program. Let me explain to you what has happened a couple of weeks ago. We've had an ongoing issues for years with the Marion County bus situation, but actually, two weeks ago, I was expecting it to be better. It's actually gotten worse. Our daughter came home and said that the school bus hasn't gotten here, so my wife took her home. I decided to contact one of the school board members and let them know what was going on. After I got off the phone with him, we talked to the bus garage. They said, "Nobody's even been dispatched on that route," and there were thirty children standing out by the road, to whom of which did not go to school that day. They just didn't go to school. That's happened twice since I've spoke with that board member. I was proud to see that he's taking initiative and doing what he can, but guys, we need to make some changes here. This is a big deal. I would like to prioritize this over anything, because no matter what issues you tackle, if a student doesn't get to school in the first place, none of it matters. None of it can be dealt with if the student isn't at school. So, I've done some research, and what I always, what it always boils down to is budget issues, right? We have budget restraints. We can't afford to pay the bus drivers more. We have to offer other incentives. Meanwhile, well, let me just give you an example. We have a director of our apprenticeship program, and he kind of operates as a school superintendent. And if we were to allocate two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year where the average salary for that position was around eighty thousand dollars a year, I would say you would have your budget fixed right there. You got some money that you can play with, but that's not the only issue. We have opening positions for twenty buses, and they're not gonna get filled. Nobody wants to drive a bus. So, I would say if you doubled the pay, you could at least get ten drivers on the road. That's better than what we got now. Right now, we have students that can't even get to school. They're sitting out there near a busy road, and I'm sure the school board member that I'm thinking of my mind, he can, he can account for all of this. He's seen it. Every single day, we're forty-five minutes late plus. Kids are missing their entire first period on a daily basis, let alone those kids that need that breakfast in the morning because they come from poverty-stricken families, whom of which their parents can't take them to school. They don't have a car. You shouldn't have to have a car for your kid to go to school. This is a public school system. They should have public transportation, and it's not there. But I digress. With those twenty bus drivers that need, we need to hire, I've spoken with a bunch of bus drivers already, some that work currently as bus drivers and some that have and then left the position for obvious reasons. It's a terrible job. You gotta put up with a lot of stress, and I've read the union contract for a school bus driver. It's an impressive contract. You get full vision, you get dental, health insurance, pension. Sign me up. But wait, you're gonna pay me eighteen dollars an hour? I mean, that's not a dignified living. These are people that have to have skills. You want a CDL from these people. Why don't you pay them what they're worth? I mean, that's not a dignified living. These are people that have to have skills. You want a CDL from these people. Why don't you pay them what they're worth? If you'd say that there's a driver shortage, come on. You know, it's not a driver shortage. It's a pay shortage, okay? If you want drivers, which we desperately need, you're going to have to come off a little bit of money. That's your solution. I'm bringing you a grievance, and I'm bringing you a solution to that grievance. Now, you can go about this your own way. You can say, "Oh, you know, he's dirty, and he wears overalls." We don't want to listen to him. We know what we're doing. And, you know, I don't sit high in the upper echelons of academia such as yourselves, but I'm smart enough to know that when a child doesn't get to school, there's a problem. And it's a major failure from this board in front of me today and the people that they appoint and the people under them. So I come to you from the top to deal with this mess, because it has been ongoing for years. And now that I'm finally here, I had to take off an hour from work to be here to let you know this. I'm not happy about it. Now, I've got 500 union members that have my back, and they know how to hold signs. So you can either step into your position, or you should step down, because my union members that I love and call brother and sister, they know how to hold signs. You don't have to live in Marion County to swing an election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Dr. Gullett, would you like to have this gentleman also speak with Ms. Dobbins?
Certainly, and Mr. Chapman, I'm going to get your phone number and give you a call tomorrow as well. Ms. Dobbins is available if you'd like to speak with her tonight. Thank you.
So she can address the specific route in question?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez, do we have any other speakers?
One more speaker, Madam Chair. Vanessa Vaught here.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa Vaughtier. My last name is spelled V-A-U-T-I-E-R. I am a mom of three, two in Marion County schools. Showing up together is our year-long attendance campaign theme, stressing partnerships required to ensure students are in class every day, on time, ready to learn. Help us help students show up every day by making sure your child wakes up early and arrives at school before first bell rings. That's the ironic recording I listen to while on hold with transportation most mornings and afternoons lately. Sometimes I get an all call saying it will be about 30 minutes late. It has not been accurate at all, and three of those times, they admitted no one was dispatched on that route because there isn't a set driver. My daughter and other kids in the county have been arriving to school halfway through first period some days and getting home over an hour late. The school does not let kids get breakfast and shoes them off to class when late. My daughter's fortunate enough to come home, grab a banana, and get a ride to school, but many of these kids I've spoke to say they don't have a car or their mom will just tell them to stay home. Be sure that for some, that's the only breakfast that they're getting. It breaks my heart to speak that truth, but that's why I'm here, to speak not just for my children, but for the children, drivers, and for the teachers putting up with all the tardies and makeup work. I know this has been taxing on everyone, including you all. MCPS is right alongside 88% of our country battling a bus driver shortage. But it's been three years since this really started being an issue, and it's only gotten worse. Bus drivers are leaving and not coming back, and they all have the same reasons: bad kids and low wages. I understand benefits are good for a driver that sticks around, but $19 an hour is hard to get by on, especially if the stress isn't worth it. We trust our most precious lives with these drivers. Seems like an obvious fix. More money, more drivers, less tardies, less absences. I'm aware of the bus bluetzes. Doesn't seem like that was that successful. I think if wages were raised in a decent amount, if that number along with the benefits were advertised year-round and all over the place, changes might happen. It's my understanding that drivers make around $19 an hour. However, the website and all the articles I could find stated that the starting pay was just over $16 an hour. If that's inaccurate, it should be changed to over what a Zaxby's employee makes. I appreciate those who showed up tonight, but as you're aware, it's hard getting community support with issues we parents feel we have no control over. I have posted on social media about this and even have one person ask me where they should apply to help. Seems most responses are, "They've had this issue for years. Nothing we can do." One parent suggested that the kids walk three miles down 301 and 27, through rough areas with no sidewalks. These kids can barely keep it on the sidewalk during the time they wait for the bus. One hour of 20 to 30 unsupervised kids, who the driver has had to call the cops on for fighting, doesn't sound like a good thing. If drivers say students are bad, where are the rewards for good behavior? Letting them spend their own money on Kona ice hardly seems worth the good behavior, in my opinion. If these kids aren't facing real consequences and rewards, they're going to continue to disrespect the drivers and teachers, too. You'll see more employees leaving. Transportation is unorganized, and it's hard to get straight answers from them. I do understand it's a big problem with people getting their CDLs and then leaving the job soon after. That's because Amazon, FedEx, and especially UPS pays more of a living wage. Our kids are so much more important than these packages, so why are they making less to deliver them? UPS starts at 25 an hour and goes up to 42 hours, 42 an hour after four years, all with great benefits, too. Many people would like that number and consider leaving their jobs for it. I had the thought of working for UPS myself. No one wants to drive these kids because it's stressful. It's an unappreciated and underpaid job with odd hours. We should pay them for doing the job no one wants to do. We can pledge and promise all day long, but the real action has to be made immediately before the bus system collapses. Staggering school times, condensing routes does not increase drivers. It just puts more stress on the ones you have left. I hope you can all see this from the outside looking in. It's getting worse by the week. I can see people giving up, and that's not the example I'm setting for my kids. So I'm going to continue to raise my voice for better conditions for students, employees, and families of both. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Dobbins is in the lobby already, and she would be happy to speak with you more about the route and the conditions. Dr. Gullett, anything else to add on that?
Madam Chair and members of the board, yes, I would just say, just to follow up on the $19, 10 cents is where we are. I'm told from the team, we've had conversations about this before, it's higher than many of the surrounding counties. Do we have a need? Absolutely. I mean, this is a critical need, and so point well taken by our speakers tonight in considering what we can do to try to recruit and, of course, retain drivers. I mean, this is something that we've, you know, I think we all talked about. We talked about it at a recent work session. We need, and we value our bus drivers to ensure our students get to school on time safely. Also, we'll be looking into the communication, not just "Here Comes the Bus" app, but other ways that we're making sure, because I hear the concerns with communication and making sure that we did that. If you remember, Board, from the beginning of the year, we used "Here Comes the Bus" to be very clear about where the bus was. We want to make sure the information is always accurate. Even if there's a delay, we need to make sure that they know that. So we'll be looking into that, and we'll be following up with the board. You are also all receiving weekly updates now from transportation, but we'll follow up on other items that we discover. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Any additional speakers, Ms. Martinez?
No, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Reverend Cummings.
I do got to say something on this, because this is prevailing. This is prevailing, that we have that many speakers talking about the same thing. And also that this is, we're about to go into the second nine weeks. So I think, as the superintendent said, we do need to convene a work session. This needs to be a top priority on this, because we can't, we can't keep telling folk that it's important that the kids get there on time, and we're the cause. So I do ask that the superintendent and Transportation and whoever else need to get together so that we can get together and come up with some strategies for this. That "Here Comes the Bus" app is not working as well as it is supposed to work, because I've tracked it myself. It's not, it's not, it's supposed to be real time. It's not real time. So we need to get in contact with the vendor and find out what's the issues, and we need to do those things ASAP sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Vice Chair, did you want to say something?
Yes, I will try. Every time I try to talk, I cough, so pardon me if that happens. This has been an ongoing issue and deep concern of all of ours, including mine, and it's getting our kids to school timely, and having them behave is what's going to make our school as great as it can possibly be. And while we have made huge jumps in wages and just general appreciation for team transportation, we're nowhere near, and I think we all acknowledge that, where we want to be yet. And it's very difficult when, you know, a driver walks off the job the day that, the day before school's starting, you know? And if they're doing that, then there's a reason why, and it is a very difficult job. And I wish we had the budget of Amazon and Chewy to be able to match what the private sector, you know, pays. One might argue that it's a lot easier to deliver packages of dog and cat food than it is students, regardless of, you know, their special needs or anything else they might be bringing onto the bus that day. So it is an incredibly important and honorable position that I believe we have worked very hard to acknowledge, while acknowledging we are nowhere near where we want to be. I was just looking at the numbers of last week, and I'm seeing 99.94 usage of "Here Comes the Bus" app, and I'm hopeful that the app is, can be made more accurate, because that's what people are relying on. And that was our big concern, was kids being left on the side of the road and the parents not knowing. And if they could, they would come and get them, so they weren't standing out there like that. I'm also seeing an 80% on-time delivery rate, almost 81% in the mornings, 65% in the afternoons. So those are numbers that continue to be very concerning. We have a lot of bus driver absences, callouts. We have a lot of bus driver turnover. That employee churn makes it that much more difficult, and it is a competitive labor market right now. We all know that. So we have to continue to do everything that we can to make the job of being a bus driver as honorable and safe as we possibly can. And I applaud Dr. Livinggood and her team. We worked hard as a board to really emphasize the code of student conduct and firming up behavior on the bus. I would say that most kids do understand what they need to do to ride a bus successfully, and those that are choosing not to do that, while it's taxpayer-funded, riding a bus is still a privilege. And there are other ways that kids can get to school if they can't behave on a bus and put other people in jeopardy, you know? You ask, so I'm talking. Ocala has grown. The streets are much more crowded. A bus driver has to keep his or her eyes on the road. Even if they're three to a seat, at least they have air conditioning. So good God, you know? Accept the good ride that you're getting, and let's all work together to continue to make this better. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thrower. Reverend Cummings?
And I have, again, I've reached out to Ms. Dobbins and Transportation. Something was mentioned about Superintendent us possibly changing the times that we can get kids on campus and allowing those buses to run those extra route. How hard is it for us to go ahead and get that implemented rather than waiting? Because, again, these kids are on the side of the road. I personally sat at a bus stop last week, and the bus was extremely late. Kids were out there throwing a ball, all kinds of things, play fighting, whatever. I don't want us to be the culprit in something happening to one of these kids. When we could, if we got to open up the campus a little bit earlier so those buses can get there earlier and start, it's going to be a domino effect somewhere, but we got to start somewhere. So how hard is it for us to get this going?
So thank you for the question, Board Member Cummings. That's what the team's working on. I know you've been provided some updates on some of the possible solutions with first period and others' schedules is one of those. My request and ask is not to wait till the end of the year. I mean, I think there's some things perhaps we could do semester break, but they're trying to work through, as you can see from the chart, those who are out on a temporary basis and those who will be returning and sort of weigh what those options are. So the team's working on that right now. That's what we'll come back and provide updates to, to you publicly at an upcoming meeting.
Thank you. So perhaps in a, in an October work session, we can add this to an agenda item, please?
Yes.
Do you have one more thing, because it concerned me when I heard it?
Vice Chair?
And that is about students being rushed to class and not having the opportunity. In most of the schools, in my district anyway, if buses are arriving late, they have a procedure in place for grab and go so that the kids can grab their breakfast and go on to class. I know that can feel like a hardship for some teachers and a little disruptive, but at least the kid is making it there. And there's also been some schools that have changed first periods so that the student is not in a core class and missing that critical instruction. That's a short-term fix. The long-term fix is to have more than enough bus drivers, you know, that don't call out and are there regularly and are happy with their job because the kids are behaving.
Thank you. Okay, Board, moving on to item 9.1. May I have a motion to approve the five-year District Facilities Work Program for fiscal years 2023 through 2024, excuse me, 2023, 2024 through 2027, 2028? May I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Conrad?
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you. The approval of the five-year District Facilities Work Program for fiscal years 2023, 2024 through 2027, 2028 complies with the Board policy and Florida statutes.
Thank you. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the five-year District Facilities Work Program for fiscal years 2023, 2024 through 2027, 2028? Seeing none. Board, is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C11.1 through C24.1, with the exception of items D25.1, D25.2, D25.3, D25.4, D25.5, C20.2, and C22.3, that have all been placed under discussion?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the First Amendment with Florida Visually Impaired and Blind Services LLC?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Board, during agenda review, I placed this item under discussion. I am in the belief that this contract in particular, but others like it, are put with very large dollar amounts where dollar amounts are not being encumbered on an annual basis. And I personally am not comfortable with voting in favor of this particular amendment to this agreement. There are some additional reasons that Dr. Hembrik and I have spoken about, but I will be voting against this particular item, so that's why it is in discussion. But is there any additional discussion on it? Yes, Vice Chair Thrower?
Thanks. What are the reasons that the amendment is being increased? Because I was under the impression that we're trying to hire people that are in a very specialized position and also be able to maintain them through the summer for extended school year. I remember a time when those services, I mean, if someone is visually impaired, they're going to be visually impaired spring, summer, fall, and winter. And we need to have the money available so that that student gets the services year-round if they qualify for extended school year. So that's what was going through my mind.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thrower. Without having Dr. Hembrik come in and clarify what all of my concerns had been, part of this has to do with increasing the dollar amount to a point that we just haven't been encumbering. Additionally, there is a previous service that we were using for these services, and their philosophy is teaching students who are visually impaired to live in a sighted world. And I'm not entirely certain that that is the philosophy of this current vendor. I don't know that one way or the other. But yes, students will always be visually impaired. I understand that. But a philosophy to live in a sighted world and learning how to do that is something that I believe a previous service that we had fulfilling this was doing adequately. So we do already have a contract with this particular vendor, but this First Amendment, I personally am just not voting in favor to increase this dollar amount. Dr. James.
I guess my question would be if we have a balance of, if I'm correct in reading this, we have a balance of $246,000 and change left for the rest of the school year. So can someone define the purpose for increasing the balance $42,000?
Madam Chair, may I have Dr. Hembrik come forward and share the details so we can meet the needs of the IEPs? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. So the amendment for this particular contract is to add on an additional person who can provide assistive technology support to our students. We have several students that are going through the evaluation process that possibly could need this type of services. And so we're preparing to provide that service. The amount of minutes and time will all be dependent on their particular needs and what the IEP team decides is important for them.
Do you expect to spend the $246,000 and change that you have left for the rest of the school year?
It's hard to say when we look at what we've already encumbered. Dr. Campbell, Chair Campbell is correct, we haven't encumbered near that amount. But what we typically do, because we can never determine how many students might become eligible for these services, how many, what students might transfer in, what students, if they have a deteriorating condition, may require more services. So it's always hard to predict that number. So we try to err on the side of caution and make sure that we have that contract in place so that we don't delay services.
Okay, thank you. I'm ready to vote.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
Just have one quick question on the finances.
Yes, Vice Chair.
Thank you. If the money isn't used, does it roll over then to the next year?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
We just don't spend that money.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yep, I'm ready.
So move.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Nay. Motion passes 4-1. May I have a motion to approve the Special Data Share Agreement with Power School Group LLC?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Dr. Gullett, do you have additional information on this item, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. So this item includes, this is the contract for a little more than $800,000 to include Performance Matters True North Logic and the data dashboard so that we could have internet-based professional growth, data management. And Mr. Ben Whitehouse is here to answer any questions, but we will also be talking, if you recall, about this data dashboard at an upcoming work session beginning of November as we talked about all the systems and all the data tracking that we're utilizing now. So that will also be coming up in its entirety. But this is to provide those services that our schools are using right now, progress monitoring and such. We're happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Board, are there any specific questions about this item or any discussion on it? Vice Chair.
Thank you. I'll just say it's always reassuring to me to see special data share agreements because that tells me it's been thoroughly vetted and we all have seen examples, it seems like on the daily of, you know, data breaches and things like that. So I'm really, I'll be happy to vote yes on this one.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the Utilized State of Florida Alternate Contract Source Number 43190000-22-NASPO-ACS for Public Safety Communications Products, Services, and Solutions to Purchase Mobile Radios?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Conrad, second by Reverend Cummings. Dr. Gullett, do you have any additional information on this item, please?
Thank you. Just wanted to bring to your awareness, these are items that we've discussed before. Board, I think you've all been updated on the need for us to improve our public safety communication among all agencies in Marion County and to purchase the portable radios and have those available on our buses and in our cars as well for our safety teams. So Mr. McFadden is available with any specific questions regarding this item.
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions from Mr. McFadden, but I do, I will be voting for this because this allows our Safe Schools Department to be able to adequately communicate with other law enforcement agencies around our county. And this is giving the right tools, putting the right tools in the hands of our people so that they can be more efficient and better. So I'm ready to vote on this one.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. And noting here also for the public record that the budgeted item of 2.399 million plus is coming out of our referendum funding as well. So it gives us a wonderful opportunity to say thank you to the Marion County voters as we vote on this item. Thank you for the referendum because it does help us ensure that we do or are able to provide these kind of public safety communication products that will help our students and our schools. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the Project Priority List and Expenditure of State Capital Outlay and Debt Service, CONDS, funds for fiscal year 2023, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. James.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower. Dr. Gullett, do you have additional information on this item?
Yes, thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Ms. Dobbins is coming forward to share some additional details, but just as a reminder, we've had a lot of public conversation about this and our community funding for capital and where we are and what our needs are. And this item speaks to that. So Ms. Dobbins is going to provide some additional details. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, Dr. Campbell, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Gullett. Thank you for allowing me to speak to this item tonight. I just want to explain the funding source for this item. In the capital outlay budget, we receive what is known as the Capital Outlay and Debt Service, also known as the CONDS funds. These funds are state-generated funds that are from a portion of the motor vehicle license tax revenues. This year, we received just over $1.5 million from the state and we will be using it to fund, partially fund, the roof repairs, roof replacements at North Marion Middle School. As you are also aware, we received just over $290,000 for security fencing from the state. So when you add the security fencing to also the CONDS, it comes over just $1,000,000.8 from the state. I highlight that because that's the only money we receive from the state. Our main revenue, as you know, is that 1.5 millage. When you approved the five-year District Work Program tonight, you saw and you are aware that we are still in a deficit over the next five years of $838 million worth of need in our district. We are also pursuing the Certificate of Participation of over $30 million to build two new elementary schools, a new high school, replace Lake Weir Middle School, a new gym for Osceola, and a wing at Liberty Middle School and Horizon Academy. Without further revenue, though, that is where everything is going to stop. And that's just what I wanted to highlight. With the lack of funding from the state, with the 1.5 and with the Certificate of Participation, if nothing else is generated revenue-wise, we will not able to meet the demands of growth in Marion County, nor would we be able to continue with any maintenance funds. Because what happens is the capital outlay will be taxed with the debt service to that loan that we're going to draw. So I just wanted to take the opportunity publicly, because I know you all are very aware of that, but publicly to highlight the concerns with the state funding the 1.5 mil and our deficit of $838 million over the next five years in construction and maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbins. Board, any comments or discussion on this item? Thank you for your very detailed explanation. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the Independent Citizens Referendum Oversight Committee, ICROC, bylaws?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. James, second by Vice Chair Thrower. Board, we held a work session on this item and we talked through it at that time, but is there any additional discussion on the ICROC bylaws changes? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the Renewal Agreement to Outside Counsel Agreement with Attorney Levitt of Ford and Harrison LLP to provide legal services?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower. Dr. James, I understand you pulled this item and wish to have further discussion.
Thank you. I did pull this item. I, recently this board was presented with a contract that would increase his hourly rate and we voted that down. And I have pulled this item because fundamentally, I believe that we should follow our policies and procedures as they are outlined. And the contracted rate in our policies, Board Policy 6490 dictates that the rate of pay to be set no higher than 175 an hour. Mr. Levitt's pay is much higher than that. And I think that, I don't believe it is a best practice for this board to continue to renew contracts that are above what our board policy dictates. We're violating our own policies and I don't think that that is a best practice. I know that previously Attorney Powers has shared that there are some specialized fields that have individuals that are very few and far between defined and are deemed experts in their field. And so we do approve a higher rate of pay for those individuals, but it is also my understanding that Mr. Levitt serves in a capacity that people within our own community could also fill the void for at and would and have previously worked for this district at the rate of pay that our policy states. In addition, we're in the process of hiring a staff attorney who would presumably be filling this role as well. I've talked with Ms. Morant some and made the recommendation or suggestion that is it a possibility we have the contract not for a year, but rather for maybe the next three months to get us until we've hired a staff attorney at this rate of pay, but for a shorter period of time. I want to acknowledge and understand that he's in the middle of handling some work that is important for this district to complete. And I would love to come forward with a solution and I'm interested in that, but as it presents today, I will be voting no on this contract because it is a violation of our board policy. So I think maybe Dr. Gullett, if Ms. Morant was interested in sharing more, I know she was trying to work some in the background, but...
Certainly. May I, Madam Chair, members of the Board?
Yes, certainly.
Yes, absolutely. So Ms. Morant's coming forward because it's really her team that works closely with Attorney Levitt. And I am aware that there are some cases that are underway that might take a little more time to complete. But I would also then say yes to Board Member James's point. That is the purpose of staff attorneys, to try to bring the counsel in-house and support the work, both with our employees' needs and for student cases as well. So I'll let Ms. Morant provide some additional context to the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Chair Campbell, good afternoon, Board members. Yes, Attorney Levitt does work with Human Resources and also Student Discipline as well. So he does work between both of our areas. And to your question, Dr. James, he, Mr. Levitt is agreeable to a shorter contract because as you know, all of you know, I'm sure he's only paid for the work that he does. So whether it's an annual contract or three months, he's only paid for the work that he's doing or does, that we call on him for, whether it's us or student discipline. In addition, as Dr. Gullett has mentioned, as we share a few times, we are in the process of hiring a staff attorney. So the heavy load or the majority of everything that Attorney Levitt is doing would then be done by our staff attorney. And I will repeat exactly what Dr. James said. And Dr. Gullett, we are in the middle of a few cases. And we do have some hearings that are scheduled that Attorney Levitt is working on. So I, of course, will serve at the pleasure of the board and be able to work with whatever you all approve or don't approve. But I do ask that we can continue. The contract is set to expire tomorrow, the 27th, and we would like to be able to continue, keep that continuity there. But again, I just reiterate, he's only paid for the work he's doing. And once we have the staff attorney on the board, we will no longer have that need.
Thank you. Reverend Cummings.
So Ms. Morant, let me ask this question. If this item was tabled or we delayed it, you're saying that the work that he's doing right now is in jeopardy of being completed because his current contract ends tomorrow?
So he wouldn't be able to complete it. We wouldn't be able to pay him after any work that's done after the 27th because his contract would expire. Would the work still get done? Yes. You know, we'll figure it out. And I'm sure Attorney Powers, I guess, has spoken with you all. He has some attorneys that he could refer to us, but they would be, you know, picking up in the middle of the hearings and some of the cases we have that we're working on. So again, I will reiterate, I can, we can work with whatever you all, whatever guidance you give us or whatever you approve or don't approve. But as far as, trying to think how to word it, to ensure we're able to get some of the best responses or the best answers, the best work, especially with two hearings coming up in particular, I think it would be in the district's best interest to continue with him as he has been working on it from the beginning. But again, we can work on, complete, and do whatever is needed. And again, I'll say, once the staff attorney comes on board, we'll be able to transition those things over and he's only paid for the work that he...
So if he is amicable to, as you said early, amicable to doing a shorter contract, how would that process work, Attorney Powers, if we did not approve this tonight?
There would just be need to be a resubmission with a shorter time period, a resubmission of the contract.
But he continue to do the work that he's doing now?
There is a special board meeting on Friday. So if you're not going to approve the contract as is, we can work as quickly as possible if you all would allow us to then put it on Friday's board meeting. That would be two days of us, I guess, not working with him.
Could we table this to the Friday board meeting?
Well, I just would want to know what you would want us to bring back.
Right. At this point, we do have a motion and a second on the floor for this particular contract. So we will need to vote on it as it stands. And at this juncture, we don't know that if it will fail. Let's hypothesize that it might. And if that were the case, then we would need to... Attorney Powers wants to speak.
Yes. One of the things that I can point out is that the fact that whether it were limited to a three-month, six-month, one-year contract, having the contract in place even when we may not utilize those services is fine because those are not things that would be, you know, after a certain period of time, sent to Mr. Levitt. There would be things that, there may be a situation where there's a particular conflict on a case, for example, eight months from now. The staff attorney has some particular issue and can't work on a particular case. We could utilize the services of another attorney or Mr. Levitt's attorney for that particular position. Having the contract out there, the only real concern the board should be most worried about would be making sure that that transition is indeed rapid. And so I get the idea of limiting it to a shorter timeframe. However, having an attorney on contract for sort of emergent situations is also not a bad thing. Because if something arose, you would have a situation in which you would have to rush and try to find another person to fill a role even for a temporary placement, a temporary coverage of a hearing or something like that. I think that at the board's discretion, the board may, I think, recognize that there's been progress in trying to alter how we're going to do things, forwarding that work to the staff attorney. And so the board's direction to essentially speed up that process may be, you know, something the board wishes to consider. But that's a, I don't see a detriment to having the contract for a longer period of time than, say, a three-year, three-month or something like that because of the ability to still utilize those services in the future. I can tell you also, though, that we, that other attorneys for same services, we can have contracts with them for the same purpose that, and we may not utilize them much at all. I know we have some counsel that we have them on retainer in case we need them, but we don't utilize their services unless and until we need them. So is there any financial loss or risk for that contract? No, not. And if we need those services, it's quick on the fly for us to be able to access... And if we need those services, it's quick on the fly for us to be able to access them. So, of course, completely within board's discretion. And the board may seek to inform staff and operations that the board's desire is to limit the duration that those would be extended so there's not sort of an ongoing extension. But there's not necessarily harm in having, beyond that, in having the contract period be for a longer period.
Vice Chair. Thank you. First, I want to focus on violation of board policy because when I hear that, I prick up my ears. Are we currently in violation of board policy?
Violation, I would say no. However, here's why. There are circumstances within which the board may take action in order to allow for policy, for waiver of policy for those specific purposes. However, that should not be the standard practice. We do have limited, isolated circumstances in which it has been used. I will say that in my experience with Mr. Levitt's contract, his specialty is in labor and employment law. Now, we have also utilized him as outside counsel for things that are outside his specialty area, for which his services are charged the same amount. For example, student discipline. And that is something that could be referred to another counsel for. And I believe that has been the, a direction that's been sought. And that was responsible actually for why there had been more, there had been a greater expenditure over a period of time. If it had been limited specifically to labor employment law, it would have been a much lesser expenditure. But he was a person who we had a contract with for outside counsel and was chosen frequently for whatever those needs were, including, there's some similarity between DOA hearings for employment law considerations and DOA hearings, for example, for student considerations. Our policy, part of my justification was our policy is based on what used to be guidance from, it was formerly from, it was an administrative rule that state agencies should limit to, limit to $175 an hour. And this is going all the way back to, I think, 2013. Limit to $175 an hour, the maximum spent for agency attorneys. Now, at the time, the school district in my research took that to also apply, in absence of any clarification, to not only state agencies but also, though we're not technically a subdivision of the state, also to other public entities. So while it's not required by legislation or by administrative rule, the board decided to set that policy. The board, in setting the policy, can in limited circumstances waive that policy for a particular instance, though it is not best practice, I completely agree. There are circumstances in which it arrives, it will arise, that we have an outside expert. I think, however, that if we are going to allow that such waiver, we need to have a good faith effort, and I believe that's potentially on the way, to limit those expenditures to only those things requiring that direct level of expertise, particularly where there are other avenues available and other attorneys available who could handle it at an appropriate rate.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation because I was of the understanding that we were narrowing the scope of his work with us to a specific area. And that's important to me that, you know, we're staying within our own policy and everything that would, I believe, be important to the rest of this board. The second thing I'm noticing is it's number four on outside counsel agreement. And it seems pretty clear to me that says at the bottom, the school board has already to terminate the agreement even without good cause after 60 calendar days prior written notice. So we can technically have him employed for two months.
Right. And the.
As long as it's not a violation of board policy, we know he's good at what he does. And I also know from experience that sometimes legal issues can be extended for very long periods of time that make the original hourly rate seem a whole lot cheaper.
Ms. Conrad.
Vice Chair Thrower, my thoughts were along the same line in with the idea of continuing on and not holding up the hearings. The consequences for keeping him along until we hire another attorney and then breaching that contract, what would the consequences be for that?
Well, let me be careful and say it wouldn't be breaching the contract, it'd be terminating the contract. We can terminate the contract, you know, at any time with reasonable notice. And so we definitely would never want to be in a breach situation, so I'm just going to clarify the language there. So we certainly can terminate the contract at any time. But essentially, if we simply stop using, utilizing those services, we're in essentially the same boat. We just have an option, I guess, would be. And so I believe that the board's intention being made clear here today is important and that the goal is to, is to ensure that that happens as rapidly as possible. Because it is uncomfortable position, and I respect what all board members have said here, it's an uncomfortable position to be where we have a board policy that's there for a reason. Now, the board policy being there for a reason, in the past, some outside counsel under prior administrations has charged quite an exorbitant amount. And we're talking well beyond what the dictates of this are here. And those were sort of chosen in conflict sort of basis and most likely, in my review, should not have been. However, you know, in this situation, I wouldn't want to see us shoot ourselves in the foot with important hearings that could lead to, you know, could lead to the outcome of the case being different. But DOA hearings, unlike other representation or unlike union representation and labor negotiations over the course of the next immediate couple of months, those have sort of an expiration date. You know, you don't, I mean, we know that our union negotiations, though it's an ongoing process throughout the year, there's a season for it. The same is true with the DOA hearing, once the case initiates. It's not like an OCR hearing or an EEOC hearing where those can drag on for years. Fortunately, we've managed to put a stop to that for the most part separately. But with DOA hearings, those are typically moved at a more rapid pace. And so the conclusion of those cases, I would, without knowing the particular cases involved, I would say, I would not anticipate that those would be of a great duration. So I would support the board judiciously and cautiously choosing either to alter the language of the contract for a lesser time period or, given the fact that it does not oblige us to, you know, continue those services, to accept as is and then choose to terminate the contract or not, is really, it gives you a backup option if you need it for a particular situation.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Board, at this point, first of all, Dr. James, thank you for bringing this up for further discussion because I too am concerned anytime we have an agreement that, in my opinion, still is in violation of board policy. However, for matters that are outside of, and I'm reading directly off of Mr. Levitt's website of his own bio, he is an expert in labor and employment law. So anytime we hire him to do anything outside of that scope, that isn't him that's violating board policy, it's our staff. So that's the way I'm going to view that because he's only hired to do what we ask him to do. And so 200, whatever the rate is, $250 an hour, I believe is what it was, sorry, I'm not on the right page right now, is in violation of board policy if it is outside the scope of what his specialty is. Board policy specifies specialized attorneys in certain areas certainly can be. I also appreciate the area in the contract in item four that does mention that we have the right to terminate after 60 calendar days if, without good cause. So we still have the ability to terminate should we need to do that at any given time. I am never comfortable with this board approving anything that is outside of the scope of board policy. And so I do believe that if we ensure that staff will be held to that standard, that labor and employment law, absolutely. Anything beyond that, though, then we are in violation of our own policy. That's where I feel about it. Attorney Powers, if you want to clarify.
No, I just will say, I believe it's probably around May, I did volunteer names of some attorneys who have worked with us before who do actually have specialty in labor employment law and would charge no greater than the standard rate. And also, we have and can handle DOA hearings as well. So the real issue is those cases, they're already starting, the closure of those cases. I would suspect that if Mr. Levitt's services were not retained for the closure of those cases, you may end up with duplicates of Mr. Levitt having to sort of explain and work through those cases with someone that is new to take them over. And then you'd also have the new attorney handling those in the interim. So, until the staff attorney got there. So, we, but there certainly exists, and that's something I think I'm happy that our district has been moving toward, is seeking more local outside counsel who can, with expertise. We certainly have several who currently work with us who provide a number of services at the rates that we've outlined.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. So this board member, should we approve this this evening, it is at least from my perspective that Mr. Levitt conclude the cases he's currently working on in labor and employment law and that the district work to move to attorneys of the same specialty that will abide by board policy by their contract hour. Same thing with discipline. I do not see anywhere on Mr. Levitt's own resume on his website that says anything about student discipline.
It's not a specialty area recognized by the Florida bar. It would be school, they do have a school law specialty that's recognized by the Florida bar, and he's not that.
Yes, I don't see anything about education, school, anything in his own published resume of sorts. So personally, that's how this board member feels. I understand where we are with the current existing cases. And if we don't approve something, I mean, I guess perhaps we could go two days and see if we can get something else written in the next two days and have something on our Friday board meeting. But I also understand that if we don't at least get something, then we're going to have a significant gap in the current cases he's working on. And I personally don't want to see that, but I also hopefully have expressed my concerns about where we need to fall. So.
Any additional commentary on this particular item? Yes, Vice Chair.
Thanks. Again, I just want to make sure that if I vote yes on this tonight, it's not, it's fine. It's not a violation. We can move forward. We can wrap up the work that he's been doing with quite good results for many, many years, keeping in mind that we have the 60 days and everything else that was just discussed. I need that reassurance because if I don't have it, then I'm going to need to vote no and go through the gyrations of a very fast turnaround because I'm not a board member that wants to ever be in violation of board policy. But I know what that's going to take. I can imagine what that's going to take to get that done in two days. And this is really important.
And I would need a minute to pull up the policy, and so I have it in front of me. That's something staff may have been working with to advise specifically, so I'll look at that.
And we say it's in the contract that we can terminate in 60 days, but would those cases be resolved in 60 days? I'm at the feeling that I don't want to violate our own policies. I don't want to violate anything that we've set up. I understand that we got some business that he does need to take care of, but we need to do it in a judicious manner, how we handle this, because we could set a precedent.
So as Attorney Powers is looking for that, I mean, as I read it, the thing that does cause me additional concern, I mean, so we're having extensive conversation about this, obviously, but the amendment itself, the signed renewal, excuse me, says the parties hereby exercise the option to renew the original agreement for the first of three one-year renewal options. And so even stating that we obviously have the option to renew again and again and again at this rate is a concern to me. And so I am, this board member is not comfortable with a $250 rate whenever we know that other attorneys, even locally, can do this work for the rate that we have in our board policy. However, I understand that Mr. Levitt is in present working on specific cases that we do not need to have a disruption, in my opinion. To conclude the cases he's currently working on, I would be in full support of how that fits with what we need to do tonight is in question.
Can we just call a vote?
I think Attorney Powers was trying to get our policy just so.
It's going to take me a moment. If you want to table this and move to the next one where we visit.
I asked her really to table it.
Are we tabling it?
Just proceed with the other items and we'll pick this one back up again at the end.
Okay. Then, Board, we will, do I need a motion to table?
Yes.
Motion to table by Reverend Cummings. Second by Ms. Conrad. All in favor to table? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Item has been tabled and we will get back to it here in a few minutes. Okay. Moving on to item 25.7. Bear with me while I get on the right screen, so many things open. May I have a motion to approve the contract between owner and construction manager for construction services related to construction of new technology and information services building, project 24-100?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. Dr. James, I understand you pulled this item and wish to have further discussion?
Yes, I need to recuse myself from the vote. So I wanted to, it wasn't placed properly under discussion, so that's why I asked for it to be moved here. I was on the committee that chose Allstate. I believe Allstate is the contractor for this particular item. They did a wonderful job in their interview and in their presentation, and I believe that they are a great choice for this particular project. I think I spoke in the last meeting, we, the architect we chose had previously designed a data center in Duval County. And so I think we're going to be able to build essentially a prototype data center, which should expedite the procedures. But I do think this is a great choice and I look forward to your vote.
Thank you, Dr. James. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion passes 4-0. Moving on to meeting reminders, unless we're coming back to the item. Attorney Powers, are we ready to come back to it? Or, okay, all right. Meeting reminders, our next administrative briefing. First of all, we have a special school board meeting coming up on Friday evening at 5:00. That is this Friday, September 29th, if my date is correct, yes. We have an administrative briefing and work session scheduled for October 5th, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. We also have another administrative briefing and work session scheduled for October 19th at 9:00 a.m. We will move on to board member and committee comments, starting with Ms. Martinez. Anything from the Board Services Office?
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Attorney Powers, I'll come back to you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Gullett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly to say, to confirm that we are going to go ahead and add transportation updates to a work session coming up. So we'll look to add that probably by the beginning of November, but I'll confirm. So look forward to that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll actually go to Genesis next.
So I actually wanted to mention something that we talked about in the beating of the meeting, I know, a long time, but about Hispanic Heritage Month. So I'm actually Puerto Rican and I moved here when I was nine. And I just think it's amazing how, like, even, when I moved from Puerto Rico, I didn't really, like, think about how I could be seen as different here. And I just think the fact that we're putting emphasis on, like, different, like, ethnicities and really making a point to give attention to them, it just really shows you that you guys are making an effort to include everybody, which I thankfully have never had discrimination against myself because of where I come from. But it's just really important to involve everyone in it and make sure that no one has to go through that. And I just thought it was really amazing. And I thought it was cool that she spoke Spanish as well. And also, the mega thing, I thought it was pretty cool because I really like when people choose communication between them and the teachers and really close that. between them and the teachers and really close that gap. And I just thought it was really cool. So, yeah, that's all I wanted to speak on.
Thank you so much. Caitlin, we'll go to you next.
So, coming from Westport, we have an extremely diverse school. And one of the most proud things I have about my school is that we have about easily over 50 clubs. And one of them is our Spanish club. And during this time that we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, we always kind of have collaborations between the different clubs and sometimes even a festival during our lunch hour, which is called Alpha Time. But a lot of it is to help immerse the students in their own culture and learn about different figures, similar to what the students were mentioning before. As well as, I'm part of the MECA program for a rock band. And last year, at least, we had the privilege of performing different Spanish rock songs for the students there during the lunch hour. And it's wonderful. You get to see so many people make such a wonderful thing out of their culture and embracing a bunch of different students from across campus. So, I love that there's emphasis on that, on not just my school's campus, but across. And similar to Genesis as well, the MECA for encouraging the excellence for guys and girls. Again, bridging the gap between students and staff and just relations in general, it's really, really important to be able to understand student voices. And I think that it is not an aspect that should be overlooked, but rather encouraged, considering that's our whole purpose of being here as well, is we have the privilege of being able to close the gap between us and communicate our ideas to you guys. And the last point that I wanted to touch on that I know has been a common topic for tonight is the busing system. And it's not my intention to repeat the same thing that everyone and their concerns have been provided. But I do think that it's very important to provide a student perspective. I was very fortunate to live extremely close to both my elementary and middle school areas. But entering high school, I had to start using the busing system, specifically my freshman year. And to say that it hindered my performance at school would kind of be an understatement, considering that for me, I had an AP class for my first period. That was the only class that was offered during that period. So, for me, the temporary solution of switching it to an elective was not available. I wanted to take that class for many, many reasons. But I ended up being late countless times. I remember both of my parents work for the school system, so they get up very early in the morning and they leave. I have no way of getting to school outside of that back when I was in my freshman year. And it became a really harboring thing day to day to know, hey, the bus is supposed to be here at 8:00, but I can guarantee it's not going to be here till 8:15. And that time seemed to push later and later and later, every single day that I would show up. So much so that I had to start resorting to asking other people for rides, other people's parents for rides. And I just felt like I was becoming more and more of a task rather than a priority, especially considering I was coming into a college-level class as a freshman. And the best excuse I could give to my teacher was, my bus just keeps coming later and later. There's nothing I can do. And I don't think that any student should have to face that, especially across all grades. I was fortunate enough that I'm old enough to, or at least at the time, to reach out to other people's parents and have an older sibling that was willing to work with me to take me to school. But, I mean, again, to say it's a problem is an understatement. So, I think it's very important to place emphasis on that because I only faced that for one year. And that was my main encouragement, to even get a car. Like, I didn't even want to drive a car at first. But that pushed me to want to stay for one because how am I going to get to school? How am I going to participate? This looks bad for my attendance. This looks bad for my grades. It becomes a fully immersed issue for all students. So, I just figured it would be important to put that out there. And I can't even imagine having kids who, five, six years old, are standing in the same place that I was, guaranteed knowing that that bus is not coming until way later. And I can say more often than not, I didn't have any choice some days but to stay home from school. And it was not the best option, but it's all that I could do. So, that's all I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for that very transparent perspective. Attorney Powers, are we ready to come back?
I am.
Okay. Coming back to item, what item was that again? 25.6.
We have two policies in place that may be applicable. One is particularly applicable here. One of them is simply for direct representation of board members or the superintendent in particular litigation, which does not apply. The other is 6320. That's purchasing and contracting for commodities and contractual services. And contracts must be approved and executed as follows. This is not the entire policy, but the relevant portion. Outside counsel agreements. Outside counsel agreement for the superintendent's legal representation not to exceed $175 per hour for the attorney, $125 hour for associate, and $65 per hour for paralegal. Cooperation with other governmental agencies or in circumstances in which the expenditure of funds is in question is less than $50,000. Consultants for in-service programs, student activities, and short-term use of school facilities. Payment for the contracts entered into by the superintendent together with the school board chair must be included in the school board's next monthly expenditure report. All contracts excluding competitive solicitations must be reviewed and approved by the school board's legal department before entering a contract with a vendor. It does indicate emergency purchases, notwithstanding the general limit on superintendent's authority to enter into contracts involving expenditure of public funds in an amount less than $50,000. The superintendent and board chair are authorized to approve and execute contracts on behalf of the district involving expenditure of public funds in an amount of $50,000 or more, which is, again, would be applicable here because over the duration of a calendar year, Mr. Levitt's services have been, you know, $50,000 or more. I mean, I believe that to be true. It does, there is not a specific provision for waiver that's listed within here. However, I mean, that's the fact. There's not a provision that's listed that specifically says that there is an opportunity to waive. The board may get consensus for good reason to waive any policy for emergency purposes. And it doesn't have to be health and welfare and, you know, life and limb sort of, but waiver of a policy for a temporary period. That's, and that's applicable to nearly all policies. However, that should always be done, obviously, with a direct and limited goal in mind. So, again, 6320 is the applicable provision. The board said it that way. The board said it that way for a reason. Over time, and because these are not, these are not outside counsel agreements through which the legal department retains these people, that's generally the choice of operations to retain. And I believe that probably prior to this being entered, Mr. Levitt's been working with our district for a number of years. And probably even prior to the implementation of this particular policy, it was already, his fees already were over that amount. So, I think this was, the limitation to 175 an hour was directed, basically, I'd have to go back to the original administrative code. And again, even that only spoke to attorneys retained by state agencies, like a particular department, which we're not. So, that's not applicable to us. We're not violating any kind of administrative rule or violating Florida statute. However, the board put this in place at the time they did. And that's something that throughout the duration of this boards, the current sitting boards, time of service, it's, this has always been the case. So, it's really not a question, I guess, so much of moving into violation as a question of how do we extricate ourselves from it.
Chair, if I may. And I just want to stress, I don't believe that this is an emergency, but rather a result of poor planning. We had a discussion about increasing his rate, and the policy was brought up in that discussion, which someone might be able to tell me when that was, but that was a couple months ago now. So, we have been aware that we are paying him higher than what policy stated. I know that Chair Campbell and I both spoke to that when that came up, whenever that was. So, I will be voting no on this item. And my suggestion or solution would be to ask Mr. Levitt to change his price to 175 to continue working and finish the cases that he has in front of us and bring that contract if the chair so desires to put on the board meeting for Friday. I will be voting no on this item because it is, it is not, it is in violation of our board policy.
And if that were the direction that the board wants to go, then that would be something that I, the individuals whose names I provided earlier could be utilized. And I can, you know, draft an outside counsel agreement that would suit them, and then they would have to work with Mr. Levitt to transfer in on those cases. So, you know, there's always options for everything.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Thank you, Dr. James. I also want to note in the fee and cost schedule, if in fact this motion does, is declined today and it fails today, if he were to bring it back at the board policy rate, it wouldn't just be the attorney per hour rate. It would also be the paralegal rate because in the contract currently, paralegals with Mr. Levitt are receiving 125 an hour. And Attorney Powers just said it was $60 an hour for paralegal.
$65 an hour. In fact, associates for outside counsel are, it's $175 per hour per attorney, $125 an hour for associate attorneys. So, typically, there's a lead and there's a second chair.
Sure. So, perhaps if, again, if this motion does fail today, then if he were to bring it back, we'll cross that bridge. Is there any additional discussion on this item, Board? Vice Chair.
Thank you. And I really appreciate the robust discussion. I'm not a fan of changing horses in the middle of the river. But after having this robust discussion, I feel like, you know, based on our own board policy and the way it's been thoroughly explained, there really isn't much other choice. And I know that's going to create a hardship. And that's something that I really would like to avoid in the future. I just think that that creates a lot of extra angst for everybody. And that's the last thing we need. That's all I have. I'm ready to vote.
Okay. All right. All in favor, let's see, let me go back to what actually the motion was because we have a motion on the table, or we had it tabled. So, does it come back out of being tabled from the original motion? Okay, thank you. I don't know if Ms. Martinez still knows who the motion was for approval of the renewal agreement to outside counsel agreement with Attorney Levitt of Ford and Harrison LLP to provide legal services. We had a motion by...
Mr. Cummings.
Mr. Reverend Cummings. And second by...
Nancy Thrower.
Nancy Thrower. Thank you so much. Okay. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of this agreement say aye. All opposed say nay. Nay. Motion fails. So, that is a zero to five vote. Okay. Continuing on with board comments. Dr. James.
Good evening. I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge some of the administrative approvals we had tonight in our consent agenda. We did approve the new ESE director tonight in our consent agenda. Ms. Williams Jones joins us to work, and we're all excited about that, I do believe. I want to also acknowledge Ms. Busby. At Lake Weir High is growing from Assistant Principal of Instruction to curriculum. I'm going to butcher Nora's last name. Chiquet, I think, is transitioning from a coordinator to Assistant Principal at Emerald Shores. And Mr. Pope is moving from Lake Weir to Fort McCoy as an Assistant Principal of Curriculum. And I also want to acknowledge that Ms. Schaefer is retiring from Spar Elementary. She spent many years serving Marin County Public Schools. So, congratulations to all. I wanted to acknowledge, I had a conversation today. I was at the Public Ed Foundation. And after the meeting I was in, we were just discussing things, and transportation came up. And my mom is a TAKES doc mentor. I'm just dragging everyone to become TAKES doc mentors. And so, my mom had lunch today with her TAKES doc mentor, and she's told me that her mentor, who's at Westport, her mentee, who's at Westport High School as a freshman, misses first period every single day. And I guess lucky for her, it's a subject that is not, doesn't have an EOC. And so, the only silver lining is that she's not going to miss curriculum tied to an end-of-course exam. She's still missing seat time. And not every student has the quote-unquote luxury of being scheduled, as you shared, in a non-testable period, first period. I talked, as we were having this discussion, I mentioned, you know, the Here Comes the Bus app and the other things. Because she said, her mentee says she stands and waits, as we've heard her tonight, waiting on her bus, and she never knows when it's going to come. And so, as has already been highlighted and shared, I think we need to continue to work on the Here Comes the Bus app and where we are with that. I agree with Board Member Thrower. The numbers of participation seems very high. So, there has to be some kind of disconnect with, are the students participating or are their parents participating? Can students participate? But I would also like, and I've shared with Ms. Dobbins, I'm willing, I'll sit and spend as many hours as needed on any committee to help brainstorm how to solve this problem. But there have been times in the history of public education where we've had to do like dual services on the same campus, right? And we run like a morning school, basically, and then we run an afternoon school. And in doing that, we wind up transporting children twice. And so, I'm wondering, as we think about how early students can arrive to school, you know, do we start some kind of like, instead of double routing going later, are we, can we double route going earlier? Students arriving, I would rather kids get to school an hour and a half early than an hour and a half late. And if that means we have to pay overtime, this board member would be more than happy to figure out, Ms. Bosnalis is probably yelling at me back there, but I'd be more than happy to figure out how to cover overtime in the absence of having bus drivers to drive the buses. Because we can't not acknowledge the fact that we just do not have the bus drivers. And when I see some of the reports we get, and we have people on leave or people on administrative leave, and it just like hurts my heart because every time I see a bus driver not at work, I know that that is students getting to school late, presumably. So, I would love to see brought to the board solutions that include paying someone more money somewhere to supervise children longer, to get them to school earlier. And I know that while getting home late is very frustrating, I am much more concerned as a board member about on-time arrival to school than I am on-time departure. I know that parents would want their kids home at a timely time as well. But my top priority is that on-time arrival. And so, I would like to see a discussion. And maybe, I don't know that we have a bus committee, but maybe with the board could have a representation for a problem-solving committee for this. I think that there needs, and I don't want to neglect the conversations that have already been occurring all of the time. Ms. Dobbins has been sending us weekly reports. But we have to, we have to solve the problem quickly because every time a child is missing, specifically in secondary, first period, they are missing that instruction that they're not going to be able to make up or get back. And, you know, I just, I think we need to talk through it. So, I appreciate the individuals coming tonight to share their thoughts. I know that they are not alone, and they do represent thoughts throughout the community. And I want to continue to try and problem-solve how to make it better. So, and lastly, I just want to acknowledge that I am sorry, I guess, for bringing forth Mr. Levitt's contract because I know that it's going to hinder the functionality of the work that is being done in HR currently. And I'm hopeful that we can find a temporary solution. But I do believe that I have a responsibility to follow our board policy. And I'm a firm believer, if we don't like the policy, then we should change the policy to reflect future work. So, that concludes my comments tonight.
Thank you, Dr. James. Reverend Cummings.
Good evening, everyone, once again. Good thing, celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. That is a great thing. That does show that we are recognizing different cultures, that we are inclusive, and that diversity is our strength. I think as a country, diversity is our strength. And when we're able to celebrate that, I think that's a wonderful thing. We've heard from some speakers tonight, several different speakers on different topics. I do thank Ms. Mintzey for coming forward with the Teen Gun Violence Initiative. Out of that, out of that meeting, that was also where I brought up to you about the Texas tip conversation that came out of that meeting. We did get some feedback from Attorney Powers concerning the Texas tip. And we do want to make sure that we, that our principals, our schools are blasting. are blasting that and putting it everywhere on the campus where it can be utilized. I think that's going to help our Safe Schools Department, that's going to help our students and everybody on the campus be safe. There are some, there's a MOU with the Children's Alliance that we know that there's some stipulations in there that they have to do. So we're working on that and making sure that, once that information gets to the schools, that it is not put in a closet, that it's posted. It has to be posted and for it to be efficient and effective. The other thing, and I don't want to beat a dead horse to death, but we have to look at this transportation issue. We heard it. We've been hearing it. I've been getting the calls. I've been getting the emails. And I thank, I thank God for all of our Transportation Department. They do a tremendous job of getting kids to school. The miles that they cover every day in transporting kids, students to school is enormous. However, when I look at this thing, and as I said, I've been tracking, when you have a school bus where kids are getting to school one hour late every day, that's five hours a week, roughly. I'm not good at math, but I think that's about 20 hours a month in a nine-week, a nine-week period. That's about, what, 45 hours?
No, I'm not the math girl. What are you looking at me for?
That's about 45 hours in a nine-week period. If we were holding kid, people accountable, students accountable for missing that many days, we would be giving referrals. If they were tardy that much, we would be giving referrals to the students. We would be doing all kinds of things. So there has to be some sense of urgency with this issue. We can't wait to November. We can't wait to December. We can't wait to the next semester to bring this stuff back. We have to have a sense of urgency with it. There has to be a way of, I mentioned to some people this weekend about incentivizing the drivers, possibly, and I'm just throwing stuff out there, because I'm willing to work and get, work for a solution and not just keep talking about the problem. If the driver has their regular hours, his six hours, pay him overtime for whatever they have to go for those six hours, not on a, not after the week, after the pay period, but pay it for that day. I guarantee you, you'll get people starting to drive the bus. You'll have people coming back because we keep saying that there's some things in contracts that's preventing us from doing certain things. We can't keep looking at the obstacles. We have to figure out a way to work within the obstacles. And again, we have to talk to the unions. We have to do whatever we need to do. Kids can need to be at school on time. And because right now, I'm getting calls from parents saying, hey, my kid has missed first period ever since school started. And now the report card's coming out. So is my kid going to get a pass on their grade? Because it's the school's fault, and it's the district's fault, and it's not my kid's fault that they're missing this instruction. So we have to look at this thing in its totality and understand that it's affecting a lot. We just heard from one of our student representatives that stated that, hey, I didn't have an option on moving class because that was an AP class, and that was the only time it was offered. And it, we have to put some fire under this situation. I don't know who's in charge or whoever's in charge in making this happen, but there has to be some fire put under them. And we need to get it done sooner. This is my third time saying this today. Sooner rather than later. We cannot wait to the next semester. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Ms. Conrad.
Good evening, everyone. First, I wanted to mention that I'm really excited for the participation that we've had from our student members going into this new chapter that we've done. I just didn't anticipate that it would be so wonderful. And so I really enjoy your participation and your input that you share with us at each meeting. And so I just want to thank you because you are actively engaged in what we're doing up here. So thank you. I always look forward to seeing you. Another kudos, I wanted to send out, today we received a Days of Gratitude Challenge. And as I read through that, I was thinking about our staff, bus drivers, teachers, custodians, everyone. And it's tough to be in education right now. And I loved that the calendar really was self-reflective, and it made you as a person focus on the positive and what's good. So I just want to encourage you, if you haven't had the opportunity as an employee, to just take a glance at that calendar. I think you would enjoy it. It would be beneficial. And I want to say thank you to the team that put it together because they were very good, reflective, and thoughtful ideas. And so thank you for your work in that, as we're working to have a positive impact on the district. Not to be repetitive, but transportation continues to be a concern. We heard from community members today. I just think it has to move to the top because it directly impacts student achievement. And that is our number one goal. And so I liked the idea Reverend Cummings mentioned, a work session. I do think we need to have some collaboration to come up with some new ideas. We're struggling with keeping and retaining bus drivers. What can we do? How can we get our students to school on time and beat the struggle that we're having? We have the opportunity to think outside of the box and come up with something creative to help our students get to school on time. That being said, I also want to thank our bus drivers, Transportation Department in whole, Ms. Dobbins, and our school staff, because I know that everyone is bending over backwards to make the best of a terrible situation. And so I talked with the principal earlier this week, and they were doing, moving students out of a first period if it was a core class and moving it. So they didn't have a core class for first period, which is, which is terrible. But it's a lot of work. And so I appreciate the effort that everyone is putting in to try to get us over this hump. Dr. James, I want to say thank you. We've had so many construction items, and I know that you have put in a lot of time participating and being on that committee. So I just wanted to say thank you. Every meeting we have, there's something in relation to that. So I just wanted to point that out. That's a lot, a lot of time on your part, and we appreciate your participation there. I think that just about wraps it up for me. Again, I just want to thank our team for the work that they do each and every day, helping us move forward. And if we get together to have a meeting on transportation, I hope that you will all show up to share your ideas, things that have worked in other areas, because we'd love to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Vice Chair Thrower.
Thank you. And we'll see how long my voice holds out. I'll start by saying that the struggle is real. And it's, you know, public education, it is transportation. I just want to share with everyone that I do not have strep throat. I do not have rabies. I do not even have COVID. I just have a good old-fashioned cold. And so the doctor said you can be at work, you're not contagious. So yeah, I sound bad, but it meant a lot for me to be here. And it's because of conversations like this. And I just want to make sure that it is very clear that transportation has been a tremendous priority for all of us. Sadly, we're in great company pretty much across the nation. It's a tough problem to solve, but we have made progress. But if it's your child and your situation, it doesn't feel like there's any progress being made at all. And I get that. I'm very proud of the schools that I serve and others that I get to visit. They have attendance response committee meetings, and they really talk about what the barriers are with transportation and what can be done creatively. And to try to make sure that the buses are as on-time as possible. So the problem solving is ongoing. And it brings to mind just what I've been thinking about my own life, you know? You got to have a Plan B. And, because you never know what's around the next corner. And the gratitude and the compassion that we feel for each other when we know that someone is in need, and you find a way to step up to make their life a little easier, or to carpool with them, or to not just lay in the bed and say, no, I'm not going to do anything today because, you know, something happened. And that, I refuse to believe that that's who we are, you know? We dig deep and we don't give up till the problem is solved. And I admire you for thinking, okay, I don't want to be in this position again. I want to be independent. So maybe I didn't want to drive before, and I don't know why that was, but I imagine you're driving now, right? So there's the silver lining, you know? You can either collapse or get up. And so I do not want to insinuate that anyone in Marion County Public Schools has been laying around for the last three years taking this lightly, because that could not be further from the truth. There's been tremendous progress made, but when it is your family individually or yourself as an individual, then it's natural to feel like it's really bad because it is. So I would just continue to encourage everyone to continue to problem solve, to continue to come up with those unique solutions. And yes, let's have another work session. But again, I want to make it clear that we've had many. And we have just had a change in leadership. You know, 41 years in transportation is a lot of service. So now our Transportation Department is in transition. But I think that that's all going to work out well in the long run. And in the meantime, I would just continue to encourage everyone to think about that Plan B and come together. And let's get this done. You know, if we really believe that education is the most important thing for our kids, then we will come up with solutions. We'll continue to come up with solutions until we're at 99 to 100% pickup and delivery. I'm confident in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thrower. Before my board comments, I just wanted to go back to legal because Attorney Powers, we put you on the spot earlier, and you were doing something other than giving us your comments out of legal.
Normally, I would just say nothing from legal if I didn't have anything specific. But I wanted to, today, since we were talking about celebrations, I wanted to mention a national, that today is also National Human Resource Professionals Day. And so thank you very much to our Human Resources staff. I appreciate working with you and glad you're there. And it's an important, important that we recognize people and their roles. So thank you very much. It also happens to be National Family Day, and I were always fond of saying, you know, it takes a village to raise a child. And that's true. But at its core, it also takes a family. And that family can be an extended family, and I know how much those all mean to all of us. Also, I want to take issue with the decision of the governors, and that is that in 2022, Governor Ron DeSantis did name today also as, he named it as the, the dessert, the official dessert of the state of Florida, as strawberry shortcake. Before that, it was National Key Lime Pie Day, and today is National Key Lime Pie Day, but Florida has moved away from that. So that's a difficult one for me. My wife and I are divided on that one as well. It also happens to be National Situational Awareness Day, and since everybody's waiting to go home, be situationally aware and shut up and let you guys continue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. After a couple of hours of meeting, we appreciate your comic relief. But thank you for acknowledging Human Resources Professionals Day. I was unaware of that. So Ms. Marant, sorry, we added a whole bunch to your plate tonight whenever we had the conversation we had, but we're so grateful for all that you do and all that your team does. And I will also say, tonight in our consent agenda, we approved two new job, or two revised job descriptions. As other board members have their kind of, I don't want to say pet projects, but things that they're most excited about, we did approve revised job descriptions for a digital media producer and a coordinator for recruitment. Super excited about the potential of what that looks like. Coordinator of Recruitment because we've been talking a lot about employees that we need. And so that recruiter will help us in a lot of ways now that we've approved that, and hopefully that position will be posting tomorrow. I continue to be grateful for our student board members. They hear this from my, from me every time. If I'm not mistaken, you're going to serve us one more board meeting, and then you will be exiting on to continue your senior year in Bellevue at Westport. But we've been so grateful. And to Ms. Conrad's point, I envisioned what I hoped this would be, and it has been that and so much more. And you ladies have been, frankly, whoever comes after you is going to have big shoes to fill because you've been fully engaged in all the process all along the way, and just super grateful for that. And I was talking to Vice Chair Thrower in the, before the meeting, my hope, and I'm not putting our team on the spot, but my hope is that we'll actually have you come back for a celebration, maybe just before graduation, so that our entire class of 2024 student representatives, the inaugural student representative class gets acknowledged all at one time. So anyway, I know we'll see you again in one more meeting, but just wanted to say how grateful I am and how grateful we all are that you are here. Also wanted to just point out, during the Public Education Foundation meeting today, it's already been mentioned about take stock mentors, but there still are a couple that are needed in a couple of schools. I, for the first time, am serving as a mentor and have already enjoyed my couple of meetings with my mentee. And it's going to be a wonderful time to get to know her better and all the things that she's doing over the next four years. I'm super excited about that. But again, there are a couple of spots where we still need mentors. So if you are interested, please reach out to the Public Education Foundation, and they will get you connected.
I've mentioned a few times before that we do have some textbook adoption happening. So if there's anyone in the community listening, because of my announcement on Thursday, I had a community member reach out to me who's interested in serving in one of those roles. But just for the public to hear again, we have textbook adoption coming for social studies for K through 2, social studies 3 through 5, and then also accelerated math. So if any community member is interested, please, if we haven't already filled our spots, I'm sure board members would be interested in having you reach out to us so that we might be able to consider you for one of those opportunities. And I also wanted to mention something that was brought up today during the Public Education Foundation meeting, and that's how I'm going to wrap it up. We talked a lot about transportation, and so I don't want to belabor that point. I'm looking forward to continue that conversation. To Vice Chair Thrower's point, we have had a lot of conversation about that, and work continues. But just continue to be grateful for the amazing employees that we have doing amazing work. And so last week and this week, our schools are recognizing their Teachers of the Year and Rookie Teachers of the Year in each of their schools. And they soon will be looking at the school-related Employee of the Year as well. It's a wonderful program out of the Public Education Foundation. Super grateful for all that they work, all the work that they do to ensure the recognition occurs. But the work's happening on the school campuses where teachers are doing outstanding work. We had one testimonial today from a Public Ed Board Member who's a former teacher, who said that when she received the rookie teacher, she was kind of at her wits' end and didn't know if she was going to continue in the profession. And that was the little boost that she needed that kept her going for a while longer. And so just super grateful for the amazing work that's happening in our schools every day. We like to make sure that we're focusing on students and student achievement and focusing on students all throughout our board meetings as best we can. And our teachers and all of our employees are truly doing great work to help every student succeed. So that concludes my board comments this evening. Moving on into alternative placements and expulsions, Ms. Martinez, are there any parents who submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
We have one off-air.
Thank you so much. So we will be addressing that off-air. Before addressing expulsion matters, though, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through August 23, 2023. And may I have a motion to approve the expulsions of students, JD 24-001, JD 24-002, JD 24-003, JD 24-005, JD 24-006E, JD 24-007, with Educational Services for the 2023-2024 school year and the first semester of the 2024-2025 school year.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Conrad.
Motion by Ms. Conrad?
Second.
Second by Dr. James. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of JD 24-004 with educational services for the first semester of the 2023-2024 school year?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings? Second by Vice, or excuse me, second by Ms. Conrad. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. The remainder of our meeting will need to be untelevised as we address a student discipline matter. So we will go into a brief recess now at 7:40 PM. Thank you so much for your attention this evening. We appreciate you.